Good evening and welcome to the August 23, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in the absence of Reverend Rich Garner. I will be presenting the invocation. This evening, we pray for the continued health and vitality of our city. We give thanks for our citizens who give freely of their time and support of this community. We pray for the safety of those who serve to protect our great nation, as well as pray for the safe return of our men and women serving overseas. Let us reflect on all that we have been given as citizens and residents of this wonderful city and actively seek ways to give back. We pray for all this and that our council and community be guided by the principles of fairness and cooperation during tonight’s meeting and after. Amen.
Thank you. Can we hear your report, please?
The agenda for the August 23, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 18, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item at 3:00, under Presentation on Appointments, at 3:00 A is Agenda Preview for the meetings of August 30, 2011.
Hey, Ms. Beers.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items, as well as for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. At 2:30, we do have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, City Attorney regarding amending the compensation of agency members, and secondly, Director of Community Development regarding request from the Harley-Davidson Love Ride Foundation for cosponsorship of the 28th Annual Love Ride fundraising event. That evening at 6:00 PM for the City Council meeting, we have a number of items under consent. City Auditor, this is regarding the annual report of the City of Glendale Audit Committee for fiscal year ending June 30. Fire Chief, destruction of records for Verdugo Fire Communications. Director of Information Services, this is regarding a reciprocal lease agreement between the City of Glendale and the State of California for use of the public safety communications sites at Mount Tom and Oat Mountain. Chief of Police, regarding addition of two DNA laboratory specialist positions to the Police Department utilizing grant funds. Under Action Items, we have Director of Public Works, proposed fare policies for Glendale Beeline and Dial-A-Ride Services and Transportation Fund service reductions. Director of Libraries and Director of Community Services and Parks, this is a discussion of council’s vision of the role of the Arts and Culture Commission. General Manager of GWP, this is an amended memorandum of understanding for Imperial Valley geothermal feasibility and exploration by and among the LA Department of Water and Power, Imperial Irrigation District, Glendale Burbank, Colton, Pasadena, and Southern California Public Power Authority. And lastly, we have a hearing. This is Director of Community Development, proposed ordinance and resolution to amend Title 30 of the GMC and the downtown specific plan relating generally to the transfer of design review authority from the Redevelopment Agency to the City Council. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments? Comments?
I have just two quick comments. Saturday evening, I went to a reception for the new consulate office for the Dominican Republic. I think it’s pretty amazing that we now have this prestigious office of this nation here in Glendale, and they had the Vice President of the Dominican Republic was present to sort of dedicate the office and cut the ribbon. And one of their major reasons for being here on this coast and opening a consulate here was because they’re really pushing their film industry. And it was interesting to hear them talk about the incentives that their nation was offering for filming and how they wanted to help Dominican filmmakers who are here in Los Angeles and to bring our filmmakers to the Dominican Republic to use their nation as locations for films here. So I’m looking forward to having a good working relationship with the consulate and just want everyone in Glendale to know that they are now here in Glendale. And secondly, just an interesting item that I read about, the City of Beverly Hills has announced that they are going to be doing a community branding effort in conjunction with the William Morris Agency. And so they’ve sort of taken the branding concept that we’re going into one step further. They have agency representation for their city. I assume that William Morris Endeavor is getting the standard 10% of any revenue that an agent typically gets. They didn’t really talk about the business arrangement, but it’s interesting to me that a city like Beverly Hills, which is pretty well-known all around the world, still feels the need to embark on a planned-out branding exercise for their city to keep their competitive edge and just try to grow themselves as a brand. So just something to think about as we in Glendale kind of go into the beginnings of our branding here in the city. There’s no further comments? Next item?
Madam Mayor, we do have one presentation, our staff comments, and for that I will turn to the Fire Chief.
Hey, welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. Tonight, we have a brief presentation and kind of an informational update on National Preparedness Month, and our volunteer, Tamar Hajimanukian, will be giving that for you. She’s been volunteering with us for about a month and doing a great job, so she’s going to be giving you that presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, Council, staff, and community. My name is Tamar Hajimanukian, and I’m a volunteer with the Glendale Fire Department. I’m here this evening to inform everyone that September marks the 8th Annual National Preparedness Month. Learning from the tragedies of September 11, FEMA wants to encourage citizens to be prepared to handle emergency situations when rescue teams are not available. They dedicated September to helping people be disaster-ready with three important tips: Have a Plan, Make a Kit, and Be Informed. In California, the disasters we should be most concerned with are fires and earthquakes, both of which can trap us within our homes and prevent help from reaching us. We should therefore need to be self-sufficient for at least three days, which in a large disaster may be how long it takes help to reach us. We should prepare kits that are composed of canned and dried foods, a gallon of water per person per day, medications, and any other necessities your family may need to sustain themselves. This next slide has a list of other items which would be important during a disaster, like flashlights, sleeping bags, cash, radios, all of which should be easily accessible within your home. Being prepared also means being informed. Being aware of what dangers are imminent in your area of residence will help you better prepare for their occurrence. For example, if you live in a mountainous area and it’s a particularly dry season, you should be prepared for brush fires. Or if it’s an exceptionally wet season, being prepared for landslides. Knowledge of survival techniques is also important. Knowing basic first aid, how to extinguish a small fire, and search and rescue will be helpful. Preparing yourself to be trapped within your home is important, but being prepared to evacuate is just as crucial. This means having an escape plan out of the house and a meeting spot outside the neighborhood in case the disaster occurs close to home. Also, having an out-of-town and out-of-state contact that everyone in the family knows how to reach, and having copies of important documents like insurance policies, bank account information, and identification cards should be both in the kit in a waterproof container and within the house in case you need to leave quickly. We obviously never anticipate a disaster to occur, which is why being prepared is so important. The Glendale Fire Department offers free community emergency response team courses, which further elaborate on the basics of how to be prepared. The next series of courses runs the last four Thursdays of September from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. The class is located at 780 Flower Street, which is our environmental management center, and if anyone would like further information, they can call 548-6404. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hajimanukian.
What’s that telephone number again, in case I might want to decide to attend those classes?
548-6404.
Thank you. That’s to attend the classes, and it’s 5:00 to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
So it’s five hours?
Five hours. It totals to 20 hours.
Will you guys have dinner during class?
No, no dinner.
That’s part of your survival training.
But we do provide all the materials you would need during the course.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what’s next?
Next on the calendar is Consent Items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay, I do have a request to pull 5B.
5, I’m sorry?
5B is in boy.
Wait, thank you.
I’ll move the remainder of this consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. Can you please read 5B?
5B is Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2011/12 Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Curb Ramp Installation and Sidewalk Repair Program Spec. 3450. At B1 is a resolution adopting spec and directing the City Clerk to advertise for bids.
Thank you. I have a card, Richard Espiritu.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. Very in favor of complying with the Americans with Disability Act. And just to bring some, recall some people’s memory, Barton versus Sacramento that went to the US, almost went to the US Supreme Court, made it mandatory that the sidewalks be accessible with people with disability. My major concern was the last time the City of Glendale did this project down on South Pacific Avenue. The curb cuts were broken within three months after they were installed. I hope that the new contractor that will do this job will have better material and know what they’re doing, because they really did a bad job on South Pacific Avenue. So just, I hope we have a better contractor than we did the last time, because we did spend a lot of money, and I am in favor of the Americans with Disability Act and the curb cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian?
Just, this fiscal impact came to my attention. Do we usually publish our estimates when we’re going out for proposals or requests for proposals or qualifications?
Standard practice.
Is it?
For public works bids, yeah.
Don’t we have to do that? Isn’t there some regulation that we have to do?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, yes, we do have to publish them.
Seems like giving away your hand.
Right, right.
You’re required to do it.
Right, that’s what I was thinking of.
However, it is a public bid, so obviously the contractors are bidding, are still motivated to have the little bid.
Can we underestimate and then publish that number?
No, we’d like to, but we can’t.
Councilmember Manukian, recently we’ve started giving them a range of estimates. We used to just give them one number. Now it’s a range that they need to bid within.
I would have given them, you know, a larger range, but, you know, you’re, I’ll move the item.
But now that you’ve announced your strategy, it’s not going to work.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Moved by Councilmember Manukian and seconded by Weaver. Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. Next item, please.
Six is Oral Communications, and has been the standard practice of this council. We reserve this portion for three-minute event announcements, and we will revisit Oral Communications for the full five minutes at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. I have two cards for this portion. Leon Meyer, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Meyer. I’m here on behalf of the forensic Glendale Library, and we’re pleased to bring you Dan Caldwell, international political science professor at Pepperdine, to talk about his latest book, Vortex of Conflict: The Wars in Afghanistan, Iraq, and Pakistan. Now, this is timely. We were lucky to have him at a timely point, because just in, within a week or two, we’re going to be observing the 10th anniversary of September 11. And Mr. Professor Caldwell is important enough in his field to be called to Washington DC to take part in the memorial celebration, not the memorial celebration, memorial observations that are taking place in Washington DC. Now, Professor Caldwell, in his book, his latest book, talks about pre-revolution days in Iran and the revolution in Iran, about the Russian invasion of Afghanistan, about the First Gulf War, about the start of Al Qaeda, as well as 9/11 and the beginning of the war in Afghanistan and our involvement with Pakistan. Now, we couldn’t think of a better or be lucky enough to get a more qualified person to come to Glendale to talk about these things. Dr. Caldwell graduated from Stanford with a BA and an MA and a PhD, and he also received a master’s degree from the Fletcher School of Diplomacy at Tuffsey University. In his postgraduate, so to speak, postgraduate work, he’s lectured at the Naval Postgraduate School at Monterey, California, and at Tuffsey University, I mean at Brown University. He’s also lectured at and served as a professor at USC and UCLA and Brown University. He just has an excellent background, and he’ll give us an understanding of some of the issues involved in our involvement with Pakistan and the war in Afghanistan. And this should be especially helpful to journalism students at the high school and at Glendale College, and I’ve tried to invite them, and I now invite them to come, have the teachers come and bring their classes. And he is also interested in letting parents, families who are involved with the military know what is going on and what are the reasons why their sons and daughters are serving there in that area of the world. So it’s September 15, Thursday, 7:00 at the library. Admission is free. Parking is validated at the adjoining structure, and we’re looking forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony Passarella is my last card.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. I’m Tony Passarella, and I’m here to announce Vanguardian’s Community Forum for this Thursday, August 25, 8:00 AM at Roxy’s on Colorado across from the Americana. The county assessor will present a program of importance to every homeowner, renter, and every residential or commercial building owner concerned about their property assessment on their property. El Cid de Ramos will speak about the concern of older residents and the impact of two California propositions. El Cid brings good news to the taxpayer, and there will be ample time for questions at the end. And don’t forget, it’s at Roxy’s, 8:00, this Thursday on Colorado. Bring a stakeholder. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Item 7, under Adoption of Ordinances, at 7A is an ordinance amending various sections of Title 30, including community gardens, message services, public notice, retaining walls, design review, administrative exceptions, special recreation review, circular driveways, reverse vending machines, trash enclosures, signs, temporary framing, and various updates and corrections. This was offered on August 9 by Councilmember Weaver. At 7A1 is a resolution adopting new fees related to noticing.
I’ll move 7.
You can move it, it’s okay.
Move 7A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
As I was reviewing the ordinance, I, we usually have the changes that are made in the ordinance underlined, so that one we’re reviewing later, we can at least see what the changes are. And I tried to review today, and there was, it’s over 200 pages, and for me to sit and go over every page to figure out what were the changes that were made.
Councilmember Manukian, the practice has been for the version that comes for introduction to have the red line underlined, strikeout, and then when we come back for adoption to actually have the clean version, so.
So last week’s version?
Correct.
Which one is the strikeout version?
The two-week ago version.
Yeah, actually, three weeks ago, I think, actually, three weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you.
We might note that’s why any changes that were made, you or Mr. Howard verbalized at the meeting in order to incorporate them into the.
I understand. I meant in terms of reviewing it today and what the changes were. I just couldn’t review it, so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
And now I’ll move 7A1 for the fees.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. Okay, next item.
Next item, at 7B is ordinance adding Chapter 6.10 to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to prohibit the retail sale of dogs and cats. This was offered on August 16 by Councilmember Weaver.
Thank you. And Mr. Garcia, can you please clarify what the ordinance does and doesn’t do, because we’ve been receiving some, a lot of correspondence that I think is confused, thinking that the ordinance is reaching further than it actually is.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor Friedman, for that question. The ordinance bans the sale of dogs, cats at retail pet stores, which is a store that’s open to the public, engaged in the business of selling animals. And there was an exemption in the ordinance that was brought before you last week that excluded or exempted those dogs or cats, the sale of those dogs or cats that were bred on site. After some public input and discussion by the council, the ordinance was introduced removing that particular exemption. And I think that was interpreted to me, by some, to mean that the ordinance was going to regulate the sale of dogs or cats by people who may have a litter or may occasionally engage in breeding at home or whatever and then sell those. And that’s not what this ordinance would address, because again, the general prohibition was only aimed at retail pet stores.
So it also does not affect breeders?
That’s correct.
So I don’t think there are, I don’t know if there are any breeders within Glendale, but people can still purchase pets through breeders?
That’s correct. And I would add, though, just so the record is clear, that Glendale already has an ordinance not addressing breeders per se, but addressing kennels. So if there’s, somebody has more than two dogs or more than four dogs, they would either be a commercial kennel or non-commercial kennel. In any instance, that would require a separate kennel permit from the City Clerk’s office.
Manukian?
If an individual has litter in the backyard and their dog, can they take that litter to a pet shop to have it sold or placed or adopted? Or does it have to go through the shelter? It can’t go to the pet shop?
As long as they’re not being sold, they cannot be sold or given away by that pet store. But they can, if they go through the animal control process, either through a nonprofit operator or municipal animal control agency, then they can be adopted through the, if they’ve been displayed at the pet store. But you wouldn’t necessarily adopt through the pet store. You would go through a particular.
Nonprofit or the.
Correct.
Humane society.
Correct.
And they could sell directly?
Yes.
Right.
Yes. This ordinance will not address that.
Weaver?
Nothing to confirm. There is no pet store in Glendale currently selling dogs.
That’s our understanding, yes.
Any other questions before I go to the public? Okay, I have a number of speakers. My first card is Lisa Kuta, followed by Renee Karapetian.
Hi, thank you. I think I might be the only current cat breeder living in the city. And, but first and foremost, I am a rescuer, and I run the National Breed Rescue and for my breed, and it’s an exotic breed that most people who are allergic to cats aren’t allergic to them, so it’s kind of offering something that it’s not leading to another cat dying in a shelter, because they’re able to get one that they aren’t sneezing around. But what I wanted to say is, I just wanted to make sure that this didn’t sneak into us hobby people who are being responsible. Every cat that leaves my house is spayed, neutered, microchipped to me, and I stay in contact with my people. And I know other several responsible breeders that do the same thing. I mean, you know, I get invited over to their house for house warmings. I check up on them. I call their vet that they’ve had, or I make them go to my vet. So, you know, I just want to make sure that it doesn’t move into that, because, you know, one thing I noticed in the city, in the ordinance, it said there wouldn’t be a financial impact to the city, and if it moved into hobby breeding, there would be a financial impact. We have, we hold several cat shows a year at the Civic Auditorium, so there’d be revenue to the city, which is about $20,000 a year, plus all the people, all the hotel rooms. We have at least 100 exhibitors at each one of these shows, and most of them are from out of town. They stay in the Glendale Hotels. We put people up at, all the judges up at the Glendale Hilton. That bill was several thousand dollars. We get catering. So I just want to make sure that we know that it’s, and those shows promote, you know, promote responsible pet ownership and just the love of our cats. So I just want to make sure it doesn’t slip into us that are doing the right thing and keeping in contact and keeping animals out of shelters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Renee Karapetian, followed by Elizabeth O’Rourke.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman, my name is Renee Karapetian, owner of Pet Rush in Kenneth Village, and I want to thank every one of you for considering this ordinance and passing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth O’Rourke, followed by Kristi Schilling.
Good evening, council members. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth O’Rourke. I am the National Manager of Puppy Mill Initiatives for Best Friends Animal Society. This is the third time that I’ve addressed the council on this issue, so I will not go into all of the issues about why puppy mills are such an enormous problem, how they contribute to the pet overpopulation crisis in our community, or why pet stores are such a problem, because they are the primary outlet for puppy mills. I will mention again that Best Friends has a program to partner with pet stores to successfully transition from selling commercially-bred animals to offering only rescue pets for adoption, one of which is Glendale’s own Pet Rush, that this is a proven viable model, and that we are working with the city’s only remaining traditional pet store to convert to rescue-only. The owner of Pets RS did call me, said I have stopped selling dogs, I want to go rescue-only. How can you help us? And we’re in the process of doing that. So this ordinance will not negatively impact any existing businesses, nor does it impact the breed clubs, the responsible breeders who would never sell to a pet store, or to people who show pets, like Lisa. And I will say again that my family has been in Glendale since the 30s, and that I am very proud of this council for introducing this ordinance, for being a leader on behalf of the animals and the citizens of Glendale, and for really setting a humane, compassionate, and progressive example for the rest of the country to follow, and we totally support you in this effort. So thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Schilling, followed by Lindsey Reeves.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman and council members. Kristi Schilling, and I am a Glendale resident, and I’ve seen you several times prior, and so I’m just here again to show my support and to thank you all, as Elizabeth said, for bringing up this, or hearing of this ordinance and hopefully passing and supporting it. I really, I really appreciate it, and I’m proud to live in a city that is humane, so thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Reeves, followed by Angie Groom.
Good evening, council members. I’ll be brief as well. I just want to say I 100% support this ordinance, and thank you. As a Glendale resident, I’m very proud to live in a humane, progressive city like Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Groom, followed by Charles Ober.
Good evening, council members. My name is Angie Groom. I too am a Glendale resident. I am very, very proud to be a Glendale resident tonight. Thank you for being so progressive, and I look forward to the ripple effect that hopefully this will have on other cities and encouraging them to become humane as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Ober, followed by Michael Shelton.
Good evening. I am not a resident of Glendale, but I produce one of the cat shows at the Glendale Civic. I have two points to make. One is that there seems to be a little bit of a gray area between the home-raised breeder and the retail stores, and that is, if a kitten is adopted or sold at our cat show by a breeder, how is it impacted by this ordinance? This, okay, I’m sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was going to say, we’ll answer the question at the end of the speakers.
Okay. The second thing that disturbs me a little bit, and I, along with everybody else, is very concerned about the health and the welfare of companion animals. But Glendale does not have puppy mills. They do not have even one retail store selling pets, and this constant legislation to correct problems that don’t exist in your particular community just clutters the books. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Shelton, followed by Bruce Malter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Shelton. I’m with the Cat Fancyers Association. I’m their Southwest Regional Director. The Cat Fancyers Association opposes this ordinance in its entirety, but I want to speak[1797.16] opposes this ordinance in its entirety, but I want to speak specifically to a couple of points. Part of it, the first one, is the striking of the exemption for breeders. As other people have mentioned, there are breeders within the city of Glendale. And although the ordinance would, in theory, allow for breeders to place their, their puppies and kittens through existing shelters or on their own, there are many breeders who are not comfortable publicizing their addresses due to documented instances of animal rights advocates harassing breeders once their addresses become public, and of the breeders not wanting their puppies and kittens to be placed through shelters. They prefer to work on their own and to be able to place their kittens through certain pet stores, not through large chain pet stores, but through certain local ma and pa pet stores where they have the ability to see the conditions under which their kittens would be housed. There is also a concern here, as Charles Ober mentioned, about the potential ramifications of the, how this ordinance may be interpreted in the future as far as puppies and kittens being sold at public events within the city of Glendale where it may be construed that those events are eventually considered to be for the purposes of selling cats and dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Malter is my last card.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, members of the city council. My name is Bruce Malter. I live in Burbank. I wanted, just wanted to say that I really, really have to thank all of you for, all of these, all of you who are for this ordinance. It is a very big step towards dealing with pet overpopulation. Thank you all.
Thank you. That was my last card. Mr. Garcia, could you explain the questions about how this relates to cat shows?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the ordinance, again, the prohibition applies to the sale or display or giving away of dogs or cats at retail pet stores. So in the case of cat shows or dog shows, whether they be at the Civic or anywhere else, this wouldn't apply. And again, it would not apply to the commercial breeder. It would apply if they were going to sell those through, through a local pet store. It wouldn't, it wouldn't allow that. But other than that, in the, in most cases of, of commercial or non-commercial breeding, it would not be prohibited.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments?
Make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Before we take a roll call, I just want to say that I attended the cat show last year, or this year. It was my first time ever going to a cat show. I have to admit I was dragged there by a friend, but I, I had a very good time and I was fascinated by the cat judging more than anything. And I, one day will take my, I know they have a non-breed kind of, you know, mutt cat category and, you know, maybe one day I'll even bring my, my cat over there. Okay.
Just want to comment, I'd like to thank all the organizations from across the United States of America who have weighed in on what little old Glendale, California is doing on this issue. All people. That's it, I'm ready for a vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, and I want to thank everyone. I just want to also thank everybody who came three weeks ago and who came again tonight.
And last week.
And last week. Okay, next item, please.
7C is an ordinance amending Title 30 related to artificial turf, the artificial turf. And this was offered August 9th by Councilmember Najarian.
Okay. Mr. Garcia?
Is this on? I hear this is going to be off the calendar.
It was only going to be off if you weren't here.
Make the motion, it loses and we move on.
Okay. Well, I just want, Madam Mayor, if I may. I don't want to burn any bridges with my colleagues, but I do want to, I do want to reiterate my position. One of the major objections to the artificial turf that we heard was that it was releasing toxins into the ground. In fact, that was the main issue that we had. That issue has been put to rest. It is not a toxin releaser. Our own tests have shown that the detection of any sort of chemicals are numerous factors below the federal standards. We permit artificial turf in the backyards. Staff's recommendation is that we let the planning staff determine what is appropriate or not. Are we now saying that, the only remaining objection could be the aesthetics of it, are we now saying that we don't trust our own hard-working planning staff in determining what's right and wrong? The same staff that goes through and looks at windows, that looks at design review, that looks at colors and shapes and sizes and massing and bulking, are we now saying that they are unable to make a opinion and give us advice as to whether a placement of artificial grass on a front yard is appropriate or inappropriate? I say that we are, yeah, I mean, either we trust planning staff on this, or we don't trust them for anything. And if we're going to start saying that we don't trust planning staff, that our decision on what's aesthetically permissible is far outweighed planning staff, then we should get rid of the design review board. We should bring all the design issues before us in city council. Because that's what we're saying. That's what we're leading to here. I place a lot of faith in the planning staff and our planners and what we're doing. And I think they're tough, believe me. I think they're very, very tough in many, many areas of design. But what we're doing, the proposal is, to let them make the call. And I think we've got to put faith in Mr. Hagani and all his staff when they decide what looks appropriate for the neighborhoods or not. If there's another reason why this turf is inappropriate, I'm willing to be heard. I'm willing to listen and hear that. But I'm not hearing anything else. The main issue was, I mean, it was borderline global warming. We're creating global warming in Glendale in these heat sinks and we're going to change the atmosphere. Well, we permit it in the backyards. The pavement out in Partridge Plaza far exceeds any sort of heat generation that an artificial turf would do. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do it. And I'm not persuaded by any of the reasons that have been given by any of the opponents to artificial turf. These are our own backyards and our own front yards. And gosh darn it, if planning staff says that it looks appropriate, then we should permit our residents to save water, cut back on the carbon monoxide generated by the lawn mowers and the trimmers, the noise, as well as the nitrates and toxins and the roundup weed killer that is used on the current state of natural grass that we have.
Want to make the motion?
Well, I just wanted to respond, if you don't mind.
No, we've heard this before.
As well? Well, according to this ordinance, it is also allowed in the front yard as long as it's within the street-side setback. Is that correct?
This is the, this is the alternate-
An item, right. The ordinance that is here, it says, "Artificial turf may be used when located beyond required front and street-side setbacks, and only those portions of the lot that do not exceed a slope of 5%." So it is allowed in the front setback, just like fences.
It's located outside the required setback.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That's what the ordinance says. Located outside the required street front and street-side setback.
I think the proposal is to amend the code to allow it in the, in the front yard if it's outside the front, street side.
To be clear, this is an alternative motion that Mr. Najarian introduced. This is not what we looked at
Okay.
three weeks ago. This is his, his proposed ordinance.
Oh, okay. So-
But I, I just wanted to respond. First of all, Mr. Najarian, you're not going to burn any bridges with any of us. We can certainly disagree on a lot of things and still get along. I always appreciate your point of view, even when it's wrong. I'm just kidding. No, and I think that this is the kind of issue where reasonable people can disagree. I mean, there are good arguments for artificial turf. I don't happen to agree with them. I do take exception to the Glendale News Press's article and the way they characterized what happened. Because what happened was, Mr. Manukian, because there were issues about lead content, Mr. Manukian, very rightfully, was concerned about the fields that we have. And at that point in the meeting, Mr. Starbird said that when the council was, was talking about installing that field, they knew about the issues with lead. And so they purposefully seeked out a manufacturer that they knew had a very low lead content. And it says nothing about every manufacturer. It was only talking about that one manufacturer. And to think that because that particular sample is, has a low lead content, that that means that every sample is the same, is completely inaccurate. And there's, we provided, there was evidence provided three weeks ago that there were fields that had been pulled up by order of health departments because they tested so high in lead. So I don't know whether the news press missed that, wanted a certain slant on the article, weren't paying attention, didn't hear that, I really don't know. The other thing was that the lead argument was certainly not the only or the primary argument as far as I was concerned. There are a lot of arguments about why we shouldn't expand the use of artificial turf. Aesthetics, for me, is not my, it's not my issue, quite honestly. It is for some of the homeowners associations who weighed in, I believe. And I don't discount that. You know, they have that concern and that's a valid concern. I just feel that we are in, we have environmental crises in this country or in this world because we've gotten out of balance with what is environmentally sustainable. And a product that is made out of plastic and does contain other toxic materials, and that's an artificial material, that's something that ends up in a landfill, to me, is going in the wrong direction. I just philosophically don't think that this is the kind of product that we should encourage. We do allow people to use it in the backyard. I think that that's a good compromise. It allows for, for some choice, for some flexibility, without sort of opening the door to covering our entire city in plastic. It's just not the kind of city that I, that I want to see. I mean, we're a tree city. We're a city that's embraced nature. And this is a, you know, artificial turf does not provide any kind of habitat for animals. It doesn't provide oxygen the way that natural materials do. In this day and age, there are plenty of alternatives you can use that are very drought-resistant and that use less water than artificial turf, which has to be washed to stay clean. There are issues about that animal feces don't biodegrade. If, if, if your neighbor next door happens to kind of ignore what's happening on their yard in terms of dog droppings, you could really have an issue with, with grass or with any kind of natural material that eventually biodegrades away. It doesn't do that on artificial turf. The heat island effect from that material heating up is very real. So for me, there's a lot of issues. And so I, I don't find myself persuaded. I, I think that the, this, that the ordinance, as was originally introduced, prohibiting the use of the turf in the front yards is what I would prefer. Again, I, I completely understand people who have the opposite view. I don't think they're bad people. I don't, you know, I just don't happen to agree with them.
Obviously, I don't agree with you. As a mayor, and I was born in this city, so, you know, and materials are not going to landfill anymore. They're all being recycled. We're going to eventually recycle everything that goes to a landfill today. But these arguments, we've heard them for three, four weeks, months, whatever. Mr. Najarian, why don't you just make the motion? I'll second it. We'll vote it. It'll be, it'll go down three to two, and we can move on in this city.
It'll go down three to two?
Well, if that's the way it's been up until now, if somebody reverses.
I hope no one's been arranging votes here.
Well, let's go ahead. Do you want to make the motion?
I just, I just want to say that I think part of the attraction to being on city council is, is trying time and time again to convince your colleagues to see your point of view. And even though it may seem redundant and repetitive and a fail, and, and effort and futility, there's nothing wrong with, with giving it a shot. And the only, the only thing I would say, Mr. Weaver, I know you're willing, you're anxious to move it, is that if we found a manufacturer that has low lead, then we could certainly specify that the type of grass that's put in have that low lead content. And the recycled material that the, the base for this artificial turf is using, and the blades also, keep matter out of the landfills. But anyway, that'll be my last.
Mr. Najarian, I already made the argument that it could be regulated through the planning department on what materials, the quality of the materials, where you could put it. All of that could be legislated. And it's fallen on deaf ears, so.
I don't have a front yard. Could I, could I have a conflict?
Why?
Anyway, I will move the item at 7C.
And I'll, I'll second it with relish.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian?
I, I don't know. It really doesn't matter to me, either way. Okay, no.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
No.
I told you three, two. Now we can move on.
How are we going to vote on the next one, Dave?
I don't know.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item at eight, under Action Items 8A, is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of executive level classifications and-
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a card for 7C. You okay? Sorry about that, Bill.
Compensation for employees of the City of Glendale, City Manager, and City Attorney at 8A1 is a resolution providing for the establishment of entry-level salary step for each of these classifications.
I'm Matt Doyle, Director of Human Resources, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item before you is a resolution adopting a classification and compensation resolution for the executive level classifications. In this resolution, we're seeking a minor amendment which would establish an entry-level salary step to the existing salary grades for both city attorney and city manager classifications. Currently, the two classifications only contain a single step at which the previous incumbents are, are at that step. The appointment of Mr. Garcia is being made at a wage lower than the existing step. So therefore, we're seeking to establish a step below the current step that we have for both this, this position and the city manager position, just to provide some flexibility in making the appointment at, at a step other than the existing step.
I'm sorry, the step you're talking about is a step where the 35-year city attorney left at?
Correct.
So let's, let's just make it clear that the salary and the step you are mentioning that he's being hired, below that step is a, is probably the highest we've ever paid for any city attorney in the city of Glendale.
That's correct, councilman.
Okay. So we're-
So all we're doing is essentially creating a range so we have some flexibility to where the upcoming appointments to make, to make them at something other than that top step. And we're not moving the top step at all, so.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. But why do we need to set any ranges? Because when I look at the range, the lower range number is very low. Well, it's not very low, but based on the information that I've received during some of our discussions during the hiring process for the city attorney, I don't think we can hire a city attorney at, at the lower range. So what's the use of setting the lower range at, it's approximately 168 if I'm not mistaken?
Mr. Starbird?
What's the use of setting, setting the rate at 168 if you can't hire someone at that?
Send my service.
I should have raised this with Matt much sooner in this process, but I completely agree. This has no effect on me. I don't have a horse in this race.
No, I know. Well, same thing with the city manager's salary.
But as I, but as I look at the range, the practicality, that you would hire a city attorney?
Right.
Assuming Michael weren't here, that would be at the entry range. It's not going to happen. It's frankly significantly below
Right.
the city manager's case, the people that he's actually managing. It's not going to happen that you're going to hire somebody 30% below the top step. So it becomes rather impractical to set a range that has a 30% spread. Now, with the city attorney and his current contract, you have essentially set up a range.
Right.
With essentially the entry level where the contract's been signed and a maximum amount, that would be the appropriate range for the city attorney. And you could set the same kind of proceedings for city manager. But in this case, a 30% spread is completely impractical. This isn't going to happen.
So why are we doing it?
I don't know. Again, I apologize. I should have raised it with Matt earlier. Matt was on vacation. I hadn't paid this much attention to this issue. I thought I was just setting it at the ranges that were established in his contract. Until recently, I didn't realize the staff had just plugged in a standard 30%, which is our normal range from beginning to end. But in this case, it's not very practical.
Councilmembers, the idea was to establish a range that's consistent with the other, the other executive positions from start to finish. And we acknowledge that the end of this, the beginning of this range is very, very low. It's very broad. But it's just there to provide the utmost amount of flexibility.
Frankly, unless there's some reason this has to be done this evening, I'd recommend we hold this over to next week and let's look at what would be a more practical range for you to establish.
Because my, my concern is, now, we've hired a city attorney and we're going out for city manager. My concern is if any potential candidates look at our range
Yeah.
and they might have a-
I completely agree. I think, I think it's impractical to establish an entry step that is totally out of keeping with any, any, any reasonableness of market for either of the two positions.
I, I move to hold this over.
I do have a card. Why don't we hear from the public and then we can vote on that motion? Okay, I have one card. Mike Mohill?
Good evening, Mayor Friedman. My name is Mike Mohill. And council members, salaries for both the city manager and the city attorney is the utmost concern for the public. We've seen behavior for the past couple of years from both the city manager and the city attorney that a lot of people do not like. city attorney that a lot of people do not like. We feel they're working for the council, council members, and not for the people who put them in office. We elected you to be our representative. I don't think so. A lot of us are very disappointed. I think the first thing we should do is to consider a probation period of one year for both offices. Let's keep a tight range, rein on both positions. And at the end of 12 months, bring that person back to the city council and let the people give you input. How we feel about how we've been treated. Because a lot of us hasn't, have not been treated well by both the city manager or the city attorney. When they stonewall us, for example, on, on Mr. Draymond and his condo makeover, where are the inspection reports, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Hagani from the planning department and our legal department? We need accountability from our city manager and our city attorney. Probation period should be the first step of this program. I know you're going to bring it back next week for the money issue, but probation and a tight rein because the public has been very disappointed for the past couple of years. The results were in the last election, if I have to remind you all. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
That's my last card.
I'd just like to say that the public that doesn't like it is Mr. Mohill and the Barry Allen crew. Other than that, I hear nothing but praise for the city manager and the city attorney who is recently retired. So save it, cut it, because the public doesn't agree with you, Mr. Mohill, or with the Barry Allen crew.
Okay, so you have a motion for Mr. Manukian to continue this?
Yes, fine.
To continue it or take it off?
Just, we'd bring it back next week.
Okay.
Just a quick comment. Your city attorney and your city manager are on a constant probationary period. There's no vested interest in the position. Anytime three council members desire, you can make a change. The city attorney and city manager are the two positions, say, that serve at the will of the city council.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Do we need a second and a roll call for that motion?
There was a second.
It's taken off the calendar.
Okay, we'll take it off the calendar and bring it back next week. All righty, next item, please.
Eight B is City Treasurer regarding annual investment portfolio review for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2011. B1 is motion accepting the report.
Mr. Baruki.
Yes.
Give us the good news.
Oh, I wish I could. Somebody asked me the other day if I was prepared for the presentation of the annual report and I said, I think I've been giving the same report for the last three years now. I ought to be ready. Mayor Friedman and council members here to review the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2011. Got a short PowerPoint. I think I've got five or six slides. I know it's late, but unfortunately, numbers are a part of the job. Let's begin. The year began with guarded optimism. For the past two years, interest rates in our marketplace fell from historically low rates to historically lower rates. Would this be the year, the one where the recovery catches fire, where people go back to work, where consumer spending picks up and where interest rates finally turn around and start to rise? Nope, it was not to be. What we had, had was still one more year of falling rates to end the year with even newer historically low rates. Truly a, a difficult ending for a year that started with high hopes. Let's kind of take a look at some of our numbers. Looking at our key statistics for the end of the year, let's start with size, size of the portfolio. The portfolio, what we've got are three columns for the, representing the totals for the last three fiscal years ending June of '09, 10, and 11. Our portfolio, the city portfolio finished the fiscal year at $409 million. That's down $7 million from last month, up $10 million from last quarter, and down $39 million from the $448 million at the end of last year. People ask and they say, is, is that a result of treasury activity? And I'd like to clarify that it is not. The city treasurer's office does not spend money. And looking at that differential from the 448 to the 409 this year, probably the bulk of that would be due to GWP's aggressive capital program. They went through their bond proceeds and are now using cash from operations. Again, the city treasurer's office uses a pool approach in investing and the, the, the dollars that it has represent dollars that are part of the general fund as well as capital improvement programs and other city funds, special funds and enterprise funds. Let's take a look at the second line, interest earnings, one of my favorites. Interest earnings for the fiscal year nudged over $5.8 million for the year. That's down 2.7 million from the 8.5 million at, at the end of last, or representing last Interest earnings follow the interest rate of return and once again, the low rates in the marketplace affected the city portfolio. The challenge throughout the year was to keep the portfolio rate of return at, at 1.5% or above. We came close, but no cigar. For the fiscal year, the annual rate of return for the portfolio was 1.43 and that's down 46 basis points from the previous year. Let's take a look at the last line, the weighted average maturity. This gives an indication as to what we're managing to. For a municipal portfolio the size of the City of Glendale, we like to keep the, if you will, the average life of the portfolio at between one and a half years to two, two and a half years. And what we see here over the course of three years, as the interest rates continue to lower from 2009 through 2010 through 2011, as interest rates fall, there's a natural tendency to move out on the yield curve to pick up yield. And so here we, we've gone from 18.2 months, two years ago, to 18.8 last year, and we're sitting a little shy of two years. Let's move to the next slide, the, and look at some rate of return comparisons. We can start with the city portfolio. These are just numbers that we've already gone, gone over. The rate of return for the portfolio fell 24%. That's, that's going from 1.89 to 1.43. A quick look at the state pool, also known as the Local Agency Investment Fund, LEAF, shows that it too could not escape the pool of falling interest rates dropping throughout the year. LEAF saw its rate of return drop by 17 basis points, from 66 basis points on the year of, of the previous year to average 49 basis points for the last fiscal year. The last line is not a pool. The city portfolio is a, a pool rate. The LEAF rate is a pool rate. What we have with the two-year treasury is that many municipalities use a running two-year, two, a running 12-month average of the two-year rate as a indication as to where their portfolio return ought to be. That two-year treasury running rate for the year fell from 90 basis points last year to 54 basis points this year, a drop of 40%. What's interesting here as far as comparison purposes, the, the return of the city portfolio at 1.43, as disappointing as that was, only because we had fall, we're in a falling interest rate environment, it actually is, as, as a point of measurement against the Local Agency Investment Fund, almost three times as large. And when you're looking at the, at the comparison of the city portfolio at 1.43, it's like two and a half times the return of the running 12-month average rate. That's fine. It's not exactly an excuse, but it's sort of something like, you know, things are bad out there. Let's move on and take a look at where we keep our investments, our asset allocation. What we've got are two pies, pie for last fiscal year and this fiscal year. You'll notice that things look pretty much the same. What we're doing at the city is managing a fixed income portfolio and sameness is good. You don't want to see a lot of, a lot of changing numbers, a lot of shuffling around of investments. Our largest pot remains the federal agency callable pot. That's 46%. That's the purple slice, almost half the pie. When you add the federal agency notes, that green pie wedge of 7%, put those to both together, that represents the percentage of our, of our portfolio that's in federal agencies, that matches up to the 50% of last year. Not a, not a large change. The local agency investment fund going clockwise, yellow or a mustard color up there, represents the second largest category that we have. That's at 37% versus 33% last year. And our corporate notes, by the way, on that LEAF, it's kind of interest, this is interesting to note. It looks like we increased our holdings in the, in the state pool and we didn't. The, the 33% of last year is $150 million in absolute bucks. It's the same number again in 19, in 2011. The reason for the increase is we're working with a smaller pie, that's all. So it's 409 million as opposed to 448 million. On the corporate notes, 7% compared to 6% last year. As you recall, we came to council in November to try to improve our holdings in corporates. It's been a rough market. What we've seen is a compression in rates as rates continue to get lower and lower and lower over the last three years. There is no spread at all. There isn't much difference between buying a corporate, even a single A, compared to buying a federal agency. It's, you would always go for an agency over a corporate. If we move on and take a look at our investment maturities, this is a tool that I look at as far as gauging or managing our liquidity, liquidity position in the portfolio. As you've often heard, the tenants or the city treasurers that they kind of work for safety, liquidity, and yield. Of those three, I count liquidity being the most important, particularly in an open, managing an open pool like this that, that feeds the budget process. It isn't like a pension fund. It's not like managing an insurance fund that's locked in. You only have monies going out and you know what your schedule is. You usually have a whole lot of bucks coming in, so your, your disbursements are limited. With this type of portfolio, you may have a call for, on short notice, for maybe 15 to 20 or 25 million dollars, not unlike what happened a few years ago when we decided to start pre-funding our PERS payment. And I think that, that came about through the budget process probably as late as May or, or the end of April. And here we were going to turn around and, and put off, I think it was 23, 24 million dollars to PERS and could we, did we have the money available in two months? Because that payment would have, had to have been there by July 15th, and it was. That is, liquidity means can you turn around and put your hands on dollars when you need something unexpected come, come up? Not only those planned payments for paying payroll and paying, paying bills, regular bills, as well as debt payments. So.
I'm sorry, Mr. Starber, did you?
Ron, before you leave this slide, that first column then includes LEAF?
Yes.
Okay. So the majority of that first column is your LEAF investment?
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. What we have there represents 221 million and as we said, 150-odd million of that is LEAF, as well as other short money, which would be the commercial paper money market funds, BAs, and short investments that are rolling off.
And how much are we earning on the 41%?
Well.
LEAF, I know, is half a percent. Is it prudent to keep that much liquid cash in, in those investments? Do we need that much? Can we move some into?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah, right now we do, because we really have no other place to put it. What's happened in the, in the last couple of weeks, ever since we had the problems in Washington DC and then the downgrading of S&amp;P, the impact to the short-term marketplace and particularly after Bernanke came along and said that these rates will be set low, continue to be low for the next two years. What we have as far as a, as far as a return, let me just read off of here. This is as of today. These are, these are rates. In the one-year category, investments, if we went out and bought a, a treasury, a one-year treasury, it would pay us six basis points. If we bought an agency, it probably would pay us maybe four or five more. If we bought a two-year treasury, kind of moving within, within that bucket right there. And what we're doing, we're using money in LEAF, which is paying us, let's see, what was the rate here? Was?
48 basis.
Yeah, it was 48 basis points, exactly.
There was a concern about the safety of the, of the investments with LEAF because of.
There was.
Problem with the state.
Right, well.
Is that still the case?
Well, let me finish here and we'll get to that question. So what we're really doing here with, with our LEAF dollars is actually using the, the greater rate with LEAF at, let's say today it's 40 basis points, to cover investments within the one to two years. At two years, if we went out and bought a treasury of, for 5 million, a, a two-year treasury, the return today would be 21 basis points. So we're getting less than one quarter of 1%. What's happened in the marketplace is there's, there's been this tremendous flight to safety. It's so crazy in the fact that when S&amp;P downgraded the US credit rating, everybody got startled, took their money out of the stock market. There was not exactly panic, but it's sort of like, you know what? I'm not sure what's happening. You've also got the problems in Europe with the banking system there and, and sovereign debt. So they, interestingly enough, ironically enough, they turned around and put their money into treasuries, the safest thing around. The very thing that S&amp;P just downgraded, the investors flock, took the money out of the stock market and put it into treasuries. And they put it, put it into treasuries short because they wanted to be able to get their hands on it. So they put it into three months, three-month treasuries that are paying 0%. They're not even getting a, a penny.
One, one basis point, I believe, is that?
To give, to give you an example of this, you know, our COPs on the police building, they get remarketed every week. The last rate I saw was 0.15 of 1% is what somebody was purchased, and that's an annualized rate, purchasing $47 million in bonds for literally a zero, almost a zero interest rate because of their security.
Oh, it's, it's truly amazing. So as of this morning, yes, it was one, one basis point a couple of days ago. It's down to, down to zero today. Six months, three basis points. One year, six basis points. Two years, 21 basis points. Now you go out and you say, okay, let's chase some yield. Let's go out to five years. Five years, 91 basis points. I mean, we're not even talking 1%. Up until the beginning of this month, when this all occurred, we had a situation where five years were, were available, we could buy agencies and get a return two plus, two and a quarter, 2.3. Now, I mean, what was the high today? It was 1, 1.5 and it was sort of like something I wasn't particularly interested in because it's got a perpetual call. But we don't want to go into optionality right here at, at this moment. All I'm saying is it's a lousy market. But getting back to your second question, Mr. Manukian?
Safety?
Safety, yes. Well, the big concern, not so much about the safety as, is can the state take our money away, the, the local agencies?
Right.
And they can't. There's a.
They cannot?
They cannot. There's a, there's a ruling on that and I have that in my office. And I think we went over that last year, but, so I feel very comfortable with, with, with the state managing the pool.
You wouldn't want to risk the economy five years out. You wouldn't want to risk the economy five years out. You don't know what's going to happen in like two years, you may have some money tied up at five years at a low rate, you can't touch it for five years, right?
Well
And when you talk about the risk and the reward.
Well, what we do, again, that's why, as I mentioned earlier, of the three tenants that I work with, liquidity is the most important to me.
Right.
I want to be able to have money available to basically take care of whatever the needs are of council.
Here out in a five-year investment, you don't have
With a five-year, right. And we only go out there, as you can see, it's at 13 percent of our total portfolio. I would, I'd probably, I'd like to keep that under 15. It would be up to 15, except rates are so lousy out there. All right, let's kind of move on to
Do we need that much liquid assets, 41 percent of our total portfolio?
No, you don't need that.
No, you don't, but what he's noting is you don't have any other alternatives unless you want to tie it up at a lesser rate for a longer period of time.
Well, we're looking at June numbers. In June, the yields were two and two and a quarter, not necessarily 0 percent as it is now. Should we have invested more in maybe some of the long-term instruments when we were investing it in June? No, it's not a gamble.
Well, that's exactly what Mr. Weaver's point was. Why don't we just turn around and barbell our portfolio, and turn around and make this end heavy? Go out five years, and there, what you're doing is you are now locking in your rate. In other words, in fact, you need liquidity, if you need cash.
I understand, but my question is, how much liquidity do we need? And that's a function of the expenditures that we incur on a monthly basis. And how much liquidity do we need, and how much liquid assets should we keep to meet those obligations? And is that, is 41 percent sufficient? Should we have more? Should we have less? That's the question.
I think what Mr. Bruecky's noting is, under more favorable circumstances, we'd probably have less.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, these are not normal times.
That is my question, thank you.
Under favorable circumstances, you wouldn't have 41 percent.
Long as we're asking questions, I was going to wait, but I'll ask my question.
Sure.
The corporate paper, the corporate notes and the commercial paper in June 2010 were 13 percent, now we're down to 8 percent. I heard you comment that there wasn't much difference between the corporate notes and some of the federal returns. When I looked down, you purchased some medium-term notes, Union Bank of California, General Electric, J.P. Morgan, these are recent purchases for 4 million, 4 million, 5 million. The stated rate there is 2.1 and a quarter, 2.1, 2.50. So in fact, there's some items that pay much more than what we're getting from the feds.
I don't, Mr. Quintero, I don't believe that we purchased those in the last three months.
Purchased them in January 2000.
Purchase date, 3/24/2011. March 1/7/2011, 1/24/2011. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. You know, 4 million, 4 million, another five.
Right. Yeah.
So I, look, I said it last year, I'm for the corporate paper, I have just as much confidence in General Electric and some of these other companies than I do the federal government at this point.
Well, when they're out there and when they fit what our needs are in the portfolio, we buy them. And we did come in November to even, and we had, as I remember, a robust conversation moving the bonds that this portfolio could actually acquire. We moved it down from a double A, triple A, double A, down to a single A. And even with that, yes, we had some purchases, but the movement in the last couple of months has been drastic.
So they're even lower, like the ones you purchased in January, March? I mean, they've even come down from the 2.1 and
Oh, it's incredible. When we ended, this is just kind of interesting, the rates that I just read to you were the rates as of this morning. The, here, the two-year, at the end of June, just six weeks ago, you could get a half a percent on a treasury.
Yeah, no, but I mean the corporate
I know, but we're talking about the same yield curve. I mean, this will influence all rates. We're going to go out now three years, 80 basis points back in June, and today it's 36 basis points. Going out five years, you're going to play corporates, it was 176. You could get, on a corporate, you could get a 210. I think one of those is like a 210.
Right, right.
Today, it's 91. It's been falling since. I mean, there's been no letup here. So, you know, this job ain't that easy. But in any event, it's a jungle out there. Let's move on to the total investments in cash, what we, the last couple of slides are not performance slides, they are simply statistical slides. It points out, the first slide, this one here, represents our investments in cash at the end of the fiscal year. We had the 409 million in the portfolio, and we had almost 8 million in cash at the bank. That's a total of 417 mil compared to the 452 million as of the end of last year. And our last slide is the bond proceeds, basically in two categories. The city treasurer oversees the bond proceed accounts for Glendale Water and Power, the electric and water issues of 2008. Those have been, all the funds have been dispersed. And what we're left with are the GRA bond proceed accounts. Of the tax allocation bond of 2010, we still have $20 million outstanding, oh, excuse me, $17 million outstanding compared to 20 million a year ago. And the new issue that you all are, all are very familiar with, the 2011 issue of 42 million, all those proceeds are there. And they're sitting there in limbo. It may come as no surprise that the economic recovery that started in June of 2009 has been the second weakest recovery since World War II. Underscoring this weakness, the economy grew at a feeble 1.3 percent in the last fiscal quarter. This will be the last fiscal quarter, April through June. Essentially, the numbers are showing a stalled economy with a growth rate unable to reduce the employment rate. Simply put, middle America is stagnating. It's getting squeezed with high unemployment and slow economic growth. Middle America needs more jobs, which will boost spending and jump-start economic growth. It's consumer spending that's critical, because it accounts for 70 percent of economic activity in the county, in the country. And until spending starts to accelerate, the nation will need to continue just to muddle along. As for the city portfolio, it's going to be, it looks like we're going to have another challenging year in front of us. There is no silver bullet, there is no easy answer. Without interest rates moving higher, we have the real prospect of having another year as the one we just finished. A sobering thought is that it could still be a very long time before interest rates increase enough to have much of a positive impact to our earnings picture. On a positive note, we are pleased to report that the portfolio is safe, it's sound, and very liquid. And we are poised to take advantage of buying opportunities, because we've got the cash when they present themselves. And Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero.
Just wanted to comment, the middle America's muddling through, but wealthy America's doing much better these past few years. Just a little editorial comment.
A political comment.
The, I assume you go directly into the market, so you don't really pay fees, is that correct?
That's correct.
When you do all of your purchases?
That's correct.
And so forth.
There's no netting out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we see the real rate.
Mr. Starbuck, how do you determine how much liquid assets you need on a periodic basis?
That's the city treasurer, he actually manages the cash flow.
Yes, I know.
So he's looking at the department's needs on a prospective basis and
And there are reports that go to him saying that this is what our
Well, Mr. Menucha
In terms of payroll, in terms of debt payments and all of that?
Yes, correct. We have developed cash flow reports. We look at all the debt services that we have on a regular basis.
Do we get those reports?
We've compiled them. Oh, do you get them?
Yes.
No.
Why would we need them?
I'd like to take a look at them.
You're certainly welcome to
Tenage, you're the expert.
If you want to look at them, you're
Yes, I do.
Certainly, they're in paper, unfortunately.
That's okay.
Don't send it to me.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have a request to speak, but there's no other questions at this time. Okay, I have one request, Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, council members, my name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. I remember about, I think about three years ago, when Mr. Barokey came here for the council and said, "The recession is over." And I couldn't believe those remarks. You all recall? I do. I was going through, before this council, every week saying headline news, "The economy is in the toilet." And I said, "We don't need to buy any more financial reports. I'll do the job for free, because it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out where our money's going. It's called common sense." I'll say it again tonight. Does anybody, I think Mr. Quintero might remember the book called Future Shock by Alvin Toplin, very popular in the '60s, right, sir? And it said, "Reading today's events will tell us what the future will be." Well, today's events are not very good. We just got a report card from S&amp;P. This country is not doing a good job. The present management who's running our economy is doing a horrible job. I don't care which political party they're from, the buck stops there. Couple more questions. Can we buy, I bought some silver several, several months ago, and I'm happy I did that. Can the city buy silver rather than stocks and bonds? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Why did the city investment drop $39 million, and the city reserves drop by nearly the same amount? How much of our investment money is encumbered? How do we treat sales tax revenue and property tax revenue, bond revenue? The money we got from the federal government for the smart meter, is that considered temporary revenue for the city? Do we play smoke and mirror with our finances? I'm glad Mr. Menucha is here, is on city council, you're the only person with a CPA background. And I'm glad you asked for the report, sir. You know, this is very pretty, this report by the Treasurers Department. It reminds me what we received a few months ago from the city manager's office telling us, the public, how wonderful our city was doing, but in fact, we were doing horrible, horrible and horrible. Thank you for your time, my name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Are there any comments or questions?
Well, I can
To Bruecky?
I just address a couple of things that Mr. Mohill. Number one, the city is restricted from investing in commodities, the government code does not permit that. Number two, this incessant talking about the fact that we're in a recession, we're not in a recession, we are in a very slow recovery. The recession ended in the middle of 2009. The big concern right now is the fact that things are moving so very slowly, is that we're going to have a double-dip recession, we're going to drop back down. I just heard something this morning, they were projecting that for the rest of this year, just two weeks ago, when all this bad stuff happened, they were projecting that the rest of the year, we would have a 3 percent GNP growth for the remainder of the year. That's now been revised by one of these Fed watchers, down to 1 percent. Things just are not getting better out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Just one small comment. As president of my credit union for a number of years, and I chaired the investment committee, I know just a tiny little bit of what Mr. Bruecky, who has spent a career in the banking business, says. And for a guy that sold fertilizer for a living to come in here and say, "Common sense, he can invest a half a billion dollars," unbelievable. It's nice in hindsight to look at what happened in the past and criticize what happened. You know, it's just unbelievable, a fertilizer salesman can do a better job. That'll be the day. So do you want a motion on AB1?
Yes, please.
You got it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Council members, Menucha.
Just for the record, the motion is to note and file, yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item, please.
At HC, a city treasurer regarding city investment policy for fiscal year 2011, 2012. At C1, is a resolution approving the investment policy for a city treasurer investment of city funds.
Motion?
Yes, Mr.
Mr. Bruecky, the charter requires you to keep an exact account of receipts and disbursements. Do you keep that? Is that the report you were talking about earlier?
The account, it's the monthly report.
It says account of receipts and disbursements, so all the receipts and disbursements for the city go through your office?
We have all the banking records, yes.
Right. Do you keep an exact account of receipts and disbursements, and is that the report that you mentioned earlier?
Oh, no. No, you were asking about how do we anticipate what our cash needs are. We're talking liquidity. We've developed over the years, reports, both for tax revenues that are coming in, as well as other regular revenues, plus a network with the other departments.
I understand, but do you have a record of the receipts and disbursements? And can you provide a report like that?
That usually is out of the controller's office.
You don't have a controller? You have the finance director. You mean the finance director?
Finance controller's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a card, if there are no other questions or comments at this time. Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, council members, my name is Mike Mohill. Just for the record, I have a college degree in liberal arts and a business background in addition to selling fertilizer. I do not have an engineering degree. Also, for the record, there is a recession, if you're working. But ask the 12.1 million, 12.1 percentage of people are unemployed right now. You ask them if we're having a recession or a depression. A depression is, means you're not working, sir. If you're working, it's a recession. I'm on social security, it's a recession for me.
And a mayor point of order?
Yeah, we need to make this germane to the subject at hand.
Thank you. Just for the point of record, thank you for the recession and depression.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move HC1.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Council members, Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes, next item, please.
At HD, is director of community services and parks regarding Glendale's float entry in the 2012 passing of Rose's Parade. At D1, is a motion approving Glendale's float entry design. D2 is motion authorizing a contract with Phoenix Decorating Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $99,000 for the construction of the float.
And on to a happier subject, Mr.
Huma, Mayor, members of the city council. As the city clerk just mentioned, staff is requesting city council approval of the 2012 Rose float design, which on June 20th was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Parks Recreation Community Services Commission. And staff is requesting approval of a contract with Phoenix Decorating Company Incorporated in the amount of $99,000 for the construction of the float. Related to approval of the 2012 Rose float, staff is also recommending a reduced level of staff support and coordination activity from the traditional level of support, in order to save costs for which staff would like to receive initial feedback from the city council today, and potentially return for formal approval of a revised coordination, staff coordination. And along those lines, staff would also like to receive initial feedback from the city council regarding the continued role and responsibilities of the Glendale Rose Float Association. As part of the development of the fiscal year 11, 12 city budget, the city council tentatively approved an appropriation of $100,000 for the for the 2012 Rosefloat, which would cover the cost of the contract to build the float. Of this appropriation, $50,000 would be the city's contribution and $50,000 would be reimbursed to the city through private donations. So the net city appropriations for the float would end up being $50,000. At the time, council made it At the time, council made it clear that the budget appropriation for the float was contingent upon the city being able to raise $50,000 from the community by the end of July. As of this date, the city has received a little over $94,000 in donations from the community. Because of the lead time required to build a float, because of the lead time required to build a float, as soon as it became clear that the city had reached its goal, the float was verbally ordered to be built and I understand that as of this date, it is almost completed. While the city's budget discussions were taking place, the Glendale Rosefloat Association continued to work with the Phoenix Decorating Company to review potential designs for the float and to select a design for a 2012 float entry and to name the float, which has been named Stepping Out in Style. Now that we know we are moving forward and that the cost is a budget concern, to save staff and maintenance and operation costs, staff is recommending to eliminate the following traditional Rosefloat activities. We're proposing to eliminate the purchase of parade brochures, to eliminate the purchase and resale of Rose Parade tickets and Rose Bowl Game tickets to save in staff costs. We're proposing to eliminate coordination of the Photo Day, which is basically a ceremonial event, and the purchase of souvenir photos, again, to save costs. We're proposing to eliminate the Glendale Rosefloat Association reception, which again is a ceremonial activity that has been traditional, but nonetheless. We're proposing to eliminate T-shirt sales and the staff costs associated with that and the purchase of T-shirts and having to resell them. And we're proposing to eliminate the float return to Brand Boulevard in order to save staff costs. We estimate that eliminating these activities that I just stated would save the city $8,736 in staff and maintenance and operation costs. Now, staff will continue to coordinate the float riders, which is a very important responsibility. We have to take care of the riders. Staff will provide direction, transportation to and from, and chaperone the riders on Parade Day. We will continue to coordinate and supervise judging activities the day before the parade and to monitor the float on Parade Day. These are very long days that require staff time. Then assuming a 2013 Rosefloat entry, staff will begin planning, lies on work with the Pass the Tournament of Roses, coordination with the Glendale Rosefloat Association, assuming that they still have a role, report writing and contract administration. We estimate that the cost for this minimal level of staff coordination and support to be approximately $5,151. Depending on city council's feedback, staff would like to return with a resolution of appropriation to appropriate these funds in the department's budget. Now regarding the Glendale Rosefloat Association, they have requested to remain involved subsequent to the letter that was received by the city. They have requested to remain involved in supporting the Rosefloat and to continue the following activities. To be the designated fundraising arm and to continue to raise funds to the best of their ability. To continue to be the entity to review and recommend the float design and the float name. To take full responsibility for hosting the Glendale Rosefloat Association reception and eliminate any cost on the part of the city. To select the float riders and to be responsible for costuming the riders, which again are currently responsibilities of the Glendale Rosefloat Association. So again, today we are requesting your approval of the design, your approval of the contract for $99,000 with the float builder, and initial feedback on a scaled-down coordination, staff coordination and elimination of some coordination activities in order to save costs and your initial feedback on the role of the Glendale Rosefloat Association. At this juncture, I and Mr. Ross Fares, our community services manager, who is responsible for the staff work on putting on the float, are happy to answer any questions. We also have in the audience to answer questions, Mr. Gary Ackerman, representing the Glendale Rosefloat Association, and Mr. Chris Loftus, representing Phoenix Design.
Are there any questions for Mr. Durant? Okay. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, let me start by saying I'm happy that we're going to have a float this year. And while I agree with the many emails we received about the elephant and circuses and the way they're the elephants are treated in those circuses, I don't think there's any alternative but to go with the design for 2012 and to work with the current contractor. So I just wanted to get that out of the way. Now, in terms of the overall future and focus and the city's involvement in the float, I would like to see if we could somehow get the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, see if we could get them involved in the fundraising activities and some of the other associated duties. That's why they were set up. I haven't read their incorporation, but, you know, hopefully we could work out something with the foundation, if they were willing to do it. But I do think if this is going to be a city float, and it is a city float, I mean, we had some volunteer or some monies that were given this year, but we have absolutely no idea what's going to happen next year. If it's going to be a city float, then we need to get the city involved. This partnership with the Rosefloat Association, it worked for many, many years, but it also stopped working for a few years. And so we find ourselves in the problems that we had this past year where we almost didn't have a float. So the idea that they're going to continue to do fundraising, they haven't been successful doing fundraising at all. But the idea that they're going to continue to recommend a design and a name and and select the float riders and so forth, I'm not interested in doing that at all. It's a city of Glendale float, and we need to bring it into the city. And if the city council decides they don't want to have a float, then we don't have a float. But whatever it is, it needs to rise and fall on the, on the city of Glendale, basically. In terms of the reception, I think that's a good idea. I've attended a number of years, and I think it's a great way to sort of kick off the holidays, and I think they do a good job. But fundraising, float design and selecting float riders, I'm not for that at all. So those are just my general comments and ideas. I think we're lucky we're going to have a float this year. And I think we need to put something in motion now in order to try to, you know, keep this enterprise going.
Other comments? Mr. Weaver?
See, I've been involved with the Tournament of Roses and the Parade since the 1980s. Think I understand the process pretty good. I believe that the Parks and Recreation Department and their foundation should be the ones that are taking care of all this, the float design, whatever. I've been told the foundation has a lot of creative people on that foundation. Sure, they're working with Parks and Rec Department, keeps it all in-house. I, at one time, I wrote the bylaws, rewrote the bylaws of the Rosefloat Association. They have one singular purpose: raise money, period. Nothing else. So with that, I think Parks and Rec Department is the best one to do it. Community will have to continue to provide funding every year to match the cities. That's up to the community. If we put the challenge out there to them, we're successful this year. That's where I think it should go. Because you want, you want a procedure that's going to go on for many decades to come.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, did you say the Parks, Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission? Or was there another, or, because he's talking about the open space.
They have a foundation. They have a Parks, what do you call it, Parks and?
That's the money-raising arm of the...
Well, they wouldn't, but they wouldn't raise money for the float. That comes to the finance department directly. But they raise money for other things within their realm. I don't know what the bylaws say.
Mayor Friedman, council members, members, the foundation's a relatively new organization. It is incorporated. It's 501(c)(3). They, thus far, they have sponsored a couple fundraising events, but I have to tell you this. Their, their involvement in fundraising is currently very limited. This, this question was actually broached with them at their meeting last month, and they did not appear interested in taking over the fundraising responsibility for the Glendale Rosefloat Association.
And they shouldn't. That, if the city puts up a portion of the cost and they put the challenge out like we did this year, it's up to the community to come forth. That money goes to the finance department, where they have a 501(c)(3). I'm not looking or never suggesting that the foundation be a fundraiser, but they have creative people that can look at renderings and help select a float.
Correct. We, we have a foundation and we also have the commission.
And a commission.
Right, whose only responsibility is already to advise the department and make recommendations to the city council, so that's another potential.
Let them pick it.
Can we hear from the public to see what they have to say?
I have no cards.
You have no cards on this item?
No.
Okay. I, ma'am?
Please.
I personally would like to thank the Rosefloat Association for their current and past activities. I think they're a great organization. They run into some problems lately, but I think they, their intentions are well. And I'm sure that the members and the association will continue working hard for the city of Glendale and the city of Glendale's float. Second, I would like to thank the sponsors and those individuals who stepped forward and put out, put the challenge, put the money for Rosefloat this year. What they've done is, I think, unprecedented in the city what I understand, what I've seen over the past, over 20 years. And they should be commended tremendously for what they've done. I'm grateful. I think it's, was a great gesture on the part of every single one of the individuals who made a contribution to the city, who made a contribution to the Rosefloat. I think, I agree in terms of the design of the Rosefloat that there could be issues, but at this point, there isn't really much we can do. I'm willing to work with the Rosefloat Association to get them a nonprofit status. I'm willing to do it for free, if they're willing to come forward, with no personal involvement in the association at all, from me personally. I'll just help you get the nonprofit status if you'd like to get it. I think the purpose of the association is sufficient to allow it to, to allow the IRS and the franchise tax board to give it a nonprofit 501(c)(3) status. I think the Rosefloat is is, based on what I've seen, is, is good enough, and I just think that this year with these contributions that we've received, it just shows the quality of our community and the quality of not just our residents, but the businesses and the individuals that are, that are here in the community operating their businesses and, and living here as well. So I think it's a great community, and I'd like to commend everyone for their, for their involvement. I also would like to know how I can be more involved with, with decorating the Rosefloat. If there is any individuals who might think that my contributions will be accepted, I'd be more than happy to go out there. I'd even volunteer as a crew chief, if necessary, to go out there.
You're really pushing my button, aren't you?
Don't micromanage this. I'd, I'd be willing to go out there and volunteer my time and efforts, again, at no charge.
And there, I just add, I'd be perfectly willing to have Mr. Menucha come and help. I am hired by Phoenix Decorating as their crew chief.
You're hired?
Yes, for no money.
Oh, okay.
I don't get a penny. I'm the only unpaid crew chief.
I thought there could be a conflict of interest here.
Oh, no, no, no. I don't get a penny, but I am, been the crew chief for many years. And just so you know, the Rosefloat Association, over the years, has tried two or three times to get a nonprofit status and never could, and they were working with attorneys and CPAs, et cetera, et cetera.
They didn't work with me, that's for sure.
Good luck. And even if they get it, they got to raise money.
I'd like to put a wager on this, actually. Would you?
Mr. Najarian?
McDonald's, big boy?
I'm, frankly, I'm surprised the Rosefloat Association could not obtain the 501(c)(3) status. It's rather rather routine for a skilled attorney to be able to obtain that in no period of time at all.
We got a skilled attorney and a CPA. Why don't you team up?
However, here's my confusion on the on the Rosefloat Association. When they wrote the letter, when we had no money and things, when times were tough, in June 15th, we got a letter, and it was my understanding, and as was portrayed to me by management, is that that was it. Rosefloat Association couldn't raise the money. They didn't want the responsibility. They couldn't help us with the staffing. We made the appeal to the public. We had some very generous businesses come forward, Mr. Crusoe, San Gabriel Transit, GMA, and the other gentleman, Solak and, husband and wife, who had recently moved into town, and they came forward. So we got the money. It's kind of like, and then Rosefloat Association said, "Well, okay, we're back into it." It's like that fable of, what's the fable where, you know, no one wants to help you make the bread, but when the bread is... I'm sounding like Bobby Seppian now. Okay. Let's not get that, that far. So I'm not, I mean, are they our fair weather friends now? I mean, I'd like, Mr. Ackerman, I'd like you to come forward and tell us what, because I'm confused. I, I thought your June 15th letter said, "That's it, finito." The city generated the money, our residents did, and now you're ready to tell us who's going to be on board, who's gonna, what costumes they're going to wear, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm tending to, to move this over to either the City Parks and Rec Commission or another branch of the city because really, what's the Rosefloat Association role in this going forward?
I would love to address that. We got a letter from the Parks and Recreation Department saying that absolutely they would not give us any support whatsoever. That would be for signing the contract, managing the riders, anything to do with the float. They would not take any responsibility or any participation at all. I sent every one of you a copy of that letter. At that point, we didn't feel as though we could participate under those rules. I think that's clear on our part, too. I do have a check tonight of $3,125 that was made in from donations from people that are interested in the float. Give it to...
Are there any strings attached to that?
I don't think so.
I mean,
There is...
I should refer to that.
There is a list of all the people that donated on Excel and their addresses. Now, my understanding is the float is not costing $99,000. It's costing $89,000. The, the builder of the float bowed down to the city's request to give them a 10% discount on all the services. And they, they've agreed to do that.
And, and let me just clarify, the issue of the Rosefloat Association being able to raise funds was difficult because you did not have a nonprofit status as, as you tried.
And we really appreciate your offer. We will take your advice.
And, and that was one of the issues.
The attorney offer or the CPA offer?
Well, Mr. Najarian, you, I'm more than willing to let you handle it if you're willing. Well, Mr. Najarian, you, I'm more than willing to let you handle it if you're willing.
We can corroborate on that effort, Mr. Manukian. Get it done in double time.
Do you have more questions for Mr. Ackerman?
So the general concept is, because you don't have the 501(c)(3) status, is that you're encouraging the donations, but they're coming to the city, is that?
No, no, you guys did that. We do not have a 501(c)(3) status. With Mr. Manukian's help, hopefully we will receive that.
How long have you guys been in, in operation without a 501(c)(3)?
1978. And we've done a great job over the years.
That doesn't make sense. Someone wants to donate, at least you can do is say, well, it's a tax deductible. Well, how has that happened?
It's, we, we've operated all these years. I didn't set it up.
I'm not, no, I'm not saying you did. I'm just saying, but as an organization, it's a rather, it's a huge handicap.
We did try to get it with Dave's help. We couldn't get it based on, we couldn't provide scholarships because it's not in our bylaws.
It has, it has nothing to do with providing scholarships.
Well, that's, that's what we were told at the time.
It's only a small part of it, providing scholarships.
But I think we have a wonderful float. I think it's a prize winner, stepping out in style. It's a, I feel it's an East Indian elephant. It's not a real elephant, so people that worry about abused animals should not worry about this elephant. And I don't believe he's towing the cart. I believe he's on the front of a motorized vehicle that we're going to give him a tour of Pasadena. But I think it's a very attractive float and I think it's an award winner, hopefully.
The elephant's being pushed?
No, we're driving him.
In reality, it's, okay, I understand.
He's pulling it. Yes, it was a pull on.
I mean, but, but to be fair, the criticism is that we're idolizing and romanticizing the, the use of elephants in carnivals, and we got flooded with emails.
I understand you did.
I just wanted you to know. I mean, flooded from all over the country.
I understand you did. And just for your knowledge, this is the third elephant Glendale's had in the Rose Parade, third one. And, and there's another elephant in the parade this year. My daughter, who works on the Burbank float, wanted to come and support me with her Pachyderm Don Parade shirt. They didn't seem to jump up and down about that.
Is that Burbank's float?
In the past it was.
Oh, in the past, I see.
In the past.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions for you.
Will you finish, Mr. Najarian?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Look, I mean, the issue, we're talking about all the donations that came in, like I say, I think it's great, but the issue is, aren't we also contributing money? The city of Glendale? Not this year, but I mean, the city of Glendale, sooner or later, is going to be contributing money. I can't believe that every year, we're going to get right around $100,000 for this float. So we need to set something in motion that's going to allow this to continue or not continue, one way or the other, but we have to have some structural change. This isn't working out. We have an organization that's done great work for 33 years, however long they've been around, but we need to bring this inside the city, get it structurally set, so we don't have this last minute appeal for, for, you know, money that we went through this year. That's, that's the way I see it.
Mayor, may I suggest, the motions here tonight are to approve the design, which is behind, it's already done, and second, to authorize the signing of the contract. Maybe all the rest of this could, a staff report could come back, how it might work, and we could chew on that for a while.
Yeah, I agree.
Rather than try to do all that tonight.
I agree.
Okay. Let me just make my quick comments. First of all, I also am grateful and in awe of the community for raising the money and doing it so quickly. I shouldn't be surprised because Glendale residents tend to be amazingly generous and they tend to be volunteers, but more money came in than I had expected. So I want to thank everybody that made it possible. I know there are people who gave large amounts of money and there are people who gave small amounts of money, and all of them, I think, really showed what Glendale's about, so I want to thank all of them. And also the Rose Float Association, who always does lots of great volunteer work on the float. And even though they weren't able to contribute very much financially this year, they still contributed in many other ways and continue to contribute. A quick comment about the cost reduction from service reduction column. There's one item that I would not support eliminating, which is the $400, if I'm reading it correctly, for the return of the float to Brand Boulevard for public display. I think for $400, the community deserves to have the float on Brand Boulevard so everybody can come and see it.
I agree.
Especially since they paid for it. So that's, that's an item I would like to see taken out.
Mayor, could I add one other thing?
Yeah.
Could you put up the picture of how the float looks today?
Can I finish my comments first, actually?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment about the design, since that's primarily while we're here. I know that we don't have any choice, we, you know, are sort of moving forward. I, I think maybe that's where I'm a little troubled by the Rose, by the association's involvement. I thought from that letter, like Mr. Najarian, that they were kind of saying we're out of it this year, and to hear that they had, were the ones who initiated the design or picked the design is confusing to me, and I don't know why we weren't notified of that. I was very clear when we went into this process that I thought that the float should be used as we were being told by many people that this is an economic development tool for the city and something to bring attention to the city. And my problem with the float is not so much the, you know, that it's a Republican symbol or a symbol of animal oppression. My problem is that, to me, it doesn't say Glendale at all in any way. And given that the people of Glendale have paid for this, I would like it to say something about Glendale. And I know we've used a lot of the iconic images of Glendale, but there's a lot, we could be more creative. We can talk, we could express different areas of what Glendale is about without just having to show the Alex Theater. I mean, we can, we can be more inventive about that. And there's a lot of things we could have said about Glendale with this float, and to me, this float says nothing about Glendale, nothing at all. It's a beautiful float, it's a pretty image, I'm sure it's going to look great coming down the road, but it could be the float of any city. So I find that really a missed opportunity and something that I had expressed when we first went into this. So I'm confused about why we, why no attempt was made in that regard. I, I thought that it would have something to do with Glendale. So I know there's nothing we can do about it now, I'll still vote for it, I'll be happy to see it, but I, I think it's a real missed opportunity. And for me, that's maybe the argument about why the city maybe should have some more involvement in terms of design and in some of the other aspects. I do agree that we need to have some sort of organization moving forward. It can't just be sort of on Parks and Recreation or just on people giving donations directly to the city. I think an association like, whether it's the Rose Float Association or another association, is necessary if this is going to be something that's funded primarily through donations. And I hope that it is the Rose Float Association. They've done a lot of work for many years and they've volunteered their time, and they're passionate about this. I, I think that they will, I think they'll be able to, to keep it going in the future, but maybe they do need more city tie-in, and we'll talk about that at a future date. So, Mr. Weaver, if you want to put up your picture of...
Well, I hope they have downstairs. You have the picture? There was T2 testing, that's a tournament of roses, mechanics, inspecting to make sure that people can get on and off the float in 45 seconds, testing all the mechanics of it, so there's no fires or anything else possible. There was one more picture, that's its status of now. They've started painting the wheels, the inside is painted. They still have all the decorations you saw on the rendering still to put on there and paint it. So it's going to be a good sized float. The wheels turn, they animated the wheels for us, so it'll, it'll look good when it's all done up.
So can I move to change the design at this point?
No, you may not, but you can come work on the float. I'll put you up on top.
As long as I'm the crew chief, I'll come.
Go see Phoenix Decorating.
Okay.
Mayor, can I move the two, well, do I have to take them separately?
No, you wouldn't get them.
Eight, eight, eight C1 and two, eight D1 and two.
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
And just to clarify, this is with the change to bring the float back to Brand Boulevard? Mr. Mannukian? Okay, yes.
And we start decorating the first Saturday in December.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, 9A is hearings. At 9A is Director of Public Works Regarding 2011 Congestion Management Self-Certification Process, CMP. 9A1 is a resolution finding the city of Glendale to be in conformance with the CMP and adopting the CMP Local Development Report in accordance with California Government Code 65089.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have a staff report on this item? Do we need, does anybody have any questions on this item?
No.
Close the hearing, I think Mr. Weaver's ready to move it.
I have no speakers. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I'll move 9A1.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is we return to oral communications, and this is a five-minute portion. Discussion is limited to items, not part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And same manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. My first card is Mark Olson, followed by Mike Mohill.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mark Olson, Southern California Edison. I know you have your own electric utility in Glendale, but we serve a small portion that was annexed into Glendale, and we have lines that go through Glendale. We'd like to come before council a couple times during the year, just to let you know, as we do with all cities, that we serve what's going on with Edison. We have been working with staff on franchise, renewal of our franchise, although it's a small franchise because we have a small amount of lines. Also, there's the area that's annexed in, we've been working with your Water and Power Department to see about taking over those customers as well. And at Edison, we've been working, just like you have, on new technology with electric vehicles and smart meters, as you have, and smart grid, as well as a lot of alternate renewable power and transmission lines to bring in more alternate renewable power. And finally, I'd like to just conclude that I also work with the city of Beverly Hills, which you mentioned earlier, and they do something where they, they try and promote themselves as a friendly city with their staff, and I'd like to commend your city clerk's office and staff, because they're always so friendly to greet people when we're here to speak, and I just want to say that. I, I cover seven cities and they're probably the friendliest city clerks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Shant Seridarian.
Good evening again, Mayor Friedman, council members. I'd like to first make a comment that the discussion on the, on the parade float was very good, very open, and I enjoyed the comments by all council members. A practice field is better than no field. As a kid growing up in Boyle Heights, there were no parks nearby, so we improvised and made the city street a football field and many young, and my youngest cousin, a football. As a teenager in Glendale, my sister and I played tennis in the street. The city manhole was the center of our oversized makeshift tennis court. The city curbs were out of bounds and the nearby telephone poles were the backcourt. Recently, I visited Adam Square in South Glendale and was delighted to see kids under the age of 13 playing soccer in an area no bigger than a postage stamp. Nearby in the park benches were parents and grandparents of these youngsters, or were they just kids from the nearby neighborhood who were looking for a green space to play their favorite sport, soccer? Unsupervised by city officials, I became nostalgic, recalling the years as a kid growing up when we had no regulated football fields or tennis courts. What we had was imagination, something that the City Parks, Recreation and Community Service Commission is sadly lacking. The city Parks, Recreation and Community Service Commission stated the fields would not be regulation size based upon a survey they took from the city's sports teams, and of course, there was always the money issue. But what the city officials didn't do is ask kids if playing soccer on non-regulated sized fields really matter, as long as there was a large area of grass. The kids would make up their own rules and regulations as we did growing up. Why not call the new playing fields "practice fields" or "pony league fields" rather than regulation sized fields? I'm sure the kids from the Adam Square and throughout South Glendale would be content with a half a loaf rather than no loaf at all. Once the new practice fields are in place, just watch the parents and the grandparents walking over from the recreation center, getting involved with the kids playing soccer. They might in time help organize some teams rather than spending their time watching TV, playing cards, dominos, or backgammon, and becoming more involved with the younger generation. Please, council members, please talk with our commission, our, our Parks and Recreation Manager. I know if there's a will, there's a way. The kids want soccer fields. I'd like to thank so far the council members who took the initiative in bringing the matter to the commission. Their comment back was that it wasn't regulation size. But ask the kids. Nobody asked the kids if they cared if the fields were going to be regulation. All they want, they'll even play in dirt if you let them. Just give them a space to play. We're not asking too much, are we, council members? I don't think money is really the issue. It's more the design. A large green area is what we need for South Glendale. It, it'll be the nearest thing these kids will have to playing soccer, and that's their favorite sport. I'd rather have these kids playing soccer than getting in trouble. As you know, at 13 is when they start getting in trouble. Parents need to be around to supervise. I just can't wait to see the adults, the parents and the grandparents from the recreation center going over and say, hey, kids, let me show you how to play soccer. Can I get it 50 years ago? And they'll organize those teams. You don't need any city officials. Keep it low keyed. Thank you, my name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. Shant Seridarian, followed by Anush Durbashyan.
Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff, my name is Shant, and I think there are not enough speed limit signs on the commercial areas of Brand and Central. The area I'm mainly referring to is between Colorado Avenue and the entrances and exits of the 134. While driving, I've noticed that there aren't as many signs as other areas in Glendale. It can get confusing because you don't know exactly which speed limit to drive at, which could even lead to possible obstructions with the law. Whenever I became a new legal driver, I remember I got confused on Central and Brand. It's not a residential area, so it could be easily viewed as a 35 mile per hour limit when it actually mostly is a 25 mile per hour limit. It should be kept constant because drivers most, most particularly new drivers like teenagers could go faster, not knowing they're breaking the law and putting themselves in danger as they take a simple drive to Americana or downtown Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Anush Durbashyan, followed by Celine Kalfian.
Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff, my name is Anush Durbashyan, and I'm here to thank Glendale Water and Power for fixing a streetlight on my street, Maryland Avenue. The streetlight was broken for over two months, and during that time, it was nearly impossible to walk safely at night or park a car without the danger of hitting a pedestrian or another vehicle. However, I would like to offer a suggestion. The GWP processes requests for repairs through email, and it took them over three weeks to fix the streetlight, which is far too long for a busy residential street. A reevaluation of the way the requests are processed will ensure that the repairs are made in a timely manner, which in turn could prevent accidents and collisions on the streets of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Celine Kalfian, followed by Patel Duridarian.
Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff, my name is Celine Kalfian, and I've been a resident of La Grisana my entire life, and never have I come across a vandalized house in my neighborhood. However, just a few weeks ago, I was leaving my house with my mom when I saw graffiti on the exterior wall of my front yard and the condominiums across my street. I'm concerned with the deterioration in respect for people's property in the city of Glendale. I'm concerned with the deterioration in respect for people's property in the City of Glendale. It's never acceptable to tag or vandalize someone else's property, and I hope the Glendale Police Department continues to crack down on this sort of crime. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patel Dharadarian, followed by Bill Weisman.
Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff, my name is Patil Dharadarian, and I'm here to talk about the recent economic situation affecting our city and what we can do in the middle of this downturn. The City of Glendale has worked on several annual events, such as the cruise night, which we are thankful for, that helped small businesses survive during this recession. Another great event that is coming up will be the Unity Fest. However, we should not stop there. We must continue generating similar events in order to boost the economy. Events like these not only help the economy, it allows the community to come together. The city residents, businesses and council members can work together and help each other to improve, develop and advance our great city, making Glendale the most popular and safe place to be to shop, to get entertained and to do business. I hope you take this request into consideration in order to work our way towards a united and economically improved city. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Weisman's my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Weisman, resident of Far North Glendale, speaking tonight as a private citizen. I notice that since Margaret Hammond isn't here tonight, and it feels kind of strange her not being here, I feel duty-bound to put in a plug for large item pickup. So if you see any refrigerators or mattresses out there on the street, there is a number you can call to have Public Works come by and pick those up. I wanted to comment briefly tonight on an article I saw online on the news press website regarding the valuation of Glendale property by the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor. And according to the article that I saw, it says that Glendale is one of the top five cities in Los Angeles County in terms of property value. And I think that's a good thing. There's a lot of cities in Los Angeles County, and obviously, it indicates that there is something different about Glendale that differentiates us from this other cities. And I thought about what some of those things might be. Maybe it's because we don't allow front yard fences or artificial turf in front yards or cheapo Home Depot windows or any number of other things like that. But whatever it is, I think we're on the right track, and I think it behooves us to keep our standards high, because that will help keep our property values high. I also wanted to talk about a really beautifully landscaped yard that's in my neighborhood. This is a yard that's on a corner house, it's on the corner of Dunsmore and Santa Carlotta. It's actually a pretty small house with a very large yard, a number of large mature trees in it. And the landscaping is absolutely gorgeous. Some of you may know my good friend and neighbor, Dave Ahern, who's the owner of that house. The landscaping is all with natural materials, boulders, lots of different native plants and flowers, hardscaping that blends in very well. There was not a single blade of grass in that yard. It is one of the most beautiful things I've ever seen, and Mr. Ahern has put a huge amount of effort into it. So just here to mention the fact that, you know, it's not necessarily one thing or the other when it comes to landscaping. Lawns, you know, are, while they do require some of the toxic chemicals and stuff that Councilmember Najarian had on display on the dais last week, it is possible to have an absolutely gorgeous yard that looks beautiful with natural materials and native plants and not have to worry about having a lawn that you need to put toxic chemicals on. Thank you very much for your time, and good night.
Thank you. That was my last card. Are there any staff, council comments?
Celine, the issues that were brought up by these individuals, what are we going to do about the process of changing lights in the city, and why does it take three weeks?
Is that GWP? I thought that was Public Works.
That is GWP. And I'm not sure three weeks is an awfully long time, frankly. I think it may be pretty responsive, so I was just noting if it was the City of LA, that light would still be out.
I know. I agree.
Well, I want to thank the young people for coming here today. They all did a great job, and they brought up really salient points. And I think I would like to have the engineer look at the speed limit signs on Brand and Central.
Now, that is Mr. Galanian's department.
Yes. We can take a look at that, but I really appreciate you all coming here, and all the speakers, of course. So thank you. Mr. Higani?
And with regard to the young speakers, I appreciated the young lady who mentioned the graffiti. I would like to point out that we have a graffiti removal unit, and they're welcome to call Neighborhood Services, and we'll have our crew out there in a jiffy to clean that up.
What is the number?
I don't remember the number. It's our website under graffiti removal, under Neighborhood Services, in the Community Development Department. Thanks.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have new business. Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Colontuno and Levin to advise and represent the interests of the City of Glendale in the lawsuit of AT&amp;T Mobility and Singular Wireless for refund of taxes assessed on data service charges. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap that work as assigned by the city attorney.
Do we have a second? Roll call.
Councilmembers Mnuchin?
Yes.
Najarian?
Epstein.
Quintero?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes.
We adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned.